Welcome, everyone. Happy New Year. This is the January 7th Planning Board meeting. And we are going to start by, actually first, I have a quick announcement, which is that there will be a public hearing hosted by the Livable Communities Agency on the accessory dwelling unit component of the Affordable Homes Act. And that will be Friday at 10:00 a.m. You can attend remotely. You can go to Boston, I assume, if you want.
It's in Boston.
Yeah, but you can attend remotely. And I will send around information for anyone who would like to to attend.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So first on the agenda, we have, we're going to review the minutes from December 17. And next, we're going to have a follow-up discussion to that discussion we had about a site visit and the 3537 Intralaken application and a planning board comment. And then we'll have an update on the Affordable, from the Affordable Housing Trust Committee on Glendale Middle Road. And then a follow-up to the master plan discussion that we had at the last meeting. Before we start, I'd like to, we have a pretty good crowd here today. I'd like to ask that if you wish to speak, that you please come up to the podium and introduce yourself so that your back isn't to the audience for people watching on Zoom and so that people know who you are. Okay, thank you. All right, with that, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from December 17?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, so next, we talked, we talked at the last meeting about the planning board comment, commenting on the 3537 Intralaken application. And I've touched base with Michael on this because some of you asked me, has a site visit been scheduled? No, a site visit has not been scheduled. And they, the public hearing opens on January 16. So, and Michael tells me that we would need to make our comment, if we want to comment as a board, we would need to make that comment in time for the public hearing opening on the 16th. I don't know, I'm not sure why it needs to, why, assuming that, I mean, maybe the select board will make a decision on the 16th, but I would sort of assume that with no site visit scheduled before the 16th, they would continue the public hearing and have a site visit. So I don't know why we need to have a comment in by the 16th, but that's what I was told. So one thing, I, you know, I'd like to hear from you all, of course. I'll start by saying that I would need a site visit in order to feel comfortable making a comment. So one idea I had, but again, I want to hear from the rest of you, is that we could, the comment we could make is that we would recommend that there be a site visit that's open to the public so that both boards and the public can attend. So that's one idea I had, but I'd like to open it up to you. And again, what, you know, we have two options. One is we can comment as a board or we can comment as individual board members. If you, if we comment as a board, that's going to have more impact or weight. So, you know, with that, I'd be interested to hear what what you all think.
And when would that site visit potentially be?
Well, it wouldn't, it would be, you know, it wouldn't be before January 16. That's when the public hearing starts at the select board level.
Okay, so it's open.
Sorry?
It's open-ended.
At this point, yeah. Not before the, not before the 16th.
I would agree with the, with the need for a site visit.
Okay. I just want to turn that off. Everyone, turn it up. Kind of hard to hear. Okay.
So, you know, the one recommendation could be that the, that the planning board puts it off until a site visit takes place.
Well, that's what, you know, he, Mike, I mean, that's what Michael said. You need to have your comment in by the 16th.
That would be a comment. Well, the comment is we need a site visit.
Right.
Okay.
So, I mean, we're just making recommendations to the, to the select board, right?
Right.
That's, I mean, I would think that they would need a site visitor as well. And why couldn't it all be the same?
Yeah.
Also, I want to hear the discussion as the application's being made and further understand it. I've looked at it, but I'd be interesting to hear the application in person. And then I think there is a site visit scheduled for the selectman, I believe, or I think there will be. We could all, and that's open to public, that's going to be open to the public. So when that happens, everybody can go. And if there isn't one, I would imagine there probably would be. But I think it's a little early to make a recommendation till we actually hear a little bit more.
I agree.
I agree. But I do think it's important to have the public, especially, I know the neighbors are concerned, so that they'd have a chance to hear what's going on, if it's more feasible for them, if it's not, and for them to be able to raise their concerns.
Okay. Nancy?
I agree.
Okay, so that just leaves us to, so shall I just submit a comment that the planning board strongly recommends that there be a site visit that is open to, open to the public? Yeah?
After a review of their presentation.
After the, after the initial presentation? Okay. All right.
Do we extend an invitation to, you know, encourage the select board to join us?
It would be, yeah, it would be open to, yeah.
It's, I mean, normally we do our site visits ahead, we do. But I think in this case, it makes sense that we can hear what's.
Okay, and we don't, we do do our site visits ahead, which is great because we're saving, you know, people time and money. But we don't have to, you know, we can always, if we're reviewing it, doing a special permit and a question comes up, we can always continue the public hearing for, you know, for another site visit if there's something that warranted that. So this is, seems like something reasonable to ask for, to me. Okay, all right, so Josh, did you want to come on up?
All right, don't worry about it. Let's just slide it over.
There's a bag behind it. No.
Yeah, Josh, pay around since 62 in their life and road. I would appreciate it if you're going over there to come over to my yard. I'm a water side 100 feet away. Whether it's, whether it's, you walk over or park on Tree Farm Road or come over as a group, I would not suggest going into the driveway unless you have a four-wheel drive. I don't know. I didn't know if you were coming, were going to come over or not. But there's something more concerning. I'm sure the, my neighbor may or may not be up.
Thank you.
Thank you. What happened?
Do you want?
What exactly happened was I left my house for 15 minutes. So the police, nobody saw exactly what happened. But the roadway was wet, but it was in the daytime and I made it back. The roadway was the same. But that was just an example of, they just cited the person for going, well, faster than reasonable, but they didn't see anything. But that, to me, looks like a vehicle that would hit at 40 miles an hour. I mean, I don't think, I mean, you could have driven, you know, 80 miles an hour past my property and I go out, they just drove right off the roadway. I drive, I drive into.
Your car or someone else's car?
That's somebody else.
Okay.
And but, you know, it's, it's a concern there because that is right across from that driveway. And you have to realize that since those signs have been put up all summer long, every year, it's slow down, all I listen to is out-of-state cars slowing down, picking up. You gotta realize you're going to be shoving tangled traffic passing out those roadways and driveways and stuff there. And there's, there's concerns, there's concerns just beyond that. It's, it's, those properties were built with a town zoning across from that property where I live. Nothing's been built on this property across from me with a current zoning. And I would tell you more than likely, Walter Wilson, if you had something very large or commercial, may not even have parcel the residential lots out across because these are such a tough road, a drive to get out of. And, and there's just, there's the positions of the driveway. It's, you know, if somebody comes over, you can see. But having vehicles, you know, having an increase, having a massive increase in vehicles is becoming concerning that that, that would not be like a one-time thing there.
Have you looked at the, the traffic study that was done for this proposal?
I, I mean, I, I really don't understand the traffic study. I can tell you that the traffic living there since 1998.
Yeah.
The traffic from 1998 was not much different than 88 or 78, and it changed around 2004, 2005 and became noticeable. That roadway is a bypass. This time of year, you shouldn't even have any cars on that roadway. So there, it's, you got intermittent times of traffic there, but an increase.
What roadway are we talking about?
183.
There shouldn't be any cars on it?
Very little. In other words, I lived there for 26 years. We have the local people and whoever was necessary. I mean, this person was not from, you know, they're from Pittsfield.
I was at one time, too.
But I'm saying, but I don't tell anybody that. I get you pull out of your driveway and nothing's around and before you know it, there's two, three, four cars behind you all the time.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to argue with you or anything like that. I'm just, they, I'm just, and I don't have an opinion at this point.
No, that's why I want the group.
About the traffic study, just let me finish.
Okay.
About the traffic study that was done. But what they do is, in typical in traffic studies, is they, they block off different time periods from whatever 10 years ago or 20 years ago or five years ago. And they count the number of accidents that have happened in that timeframe. And then they try to project using whatever models they use as to what this increased traffic would be with the proposal that, that these, this, this, this group is planning to put forward.
Now, that you're going to look at, if something's open year-round, you're looking at increased traffic through the winter.
Which is, which I'm sure is that, I'm sure it shows that. So the question is, is in the traffic study, how much of a concern that creates? And it may be, it may be a big concern as, as you're, I think.
Right, but there's also a recirculation of cars through a property.
They, that's, that's part, these traffic studies are all done by a civil engineering group. So they, they, they know what they're doing.
Okay.
Okay?
I'm saying if something's private, it's private. It's like going to McDonald's and there's 20 parking places. I'm going to get a hamburger. Well, there's 20 people, you know, there's 20 people in the McDonald's. Well, you get 10 times more recircular, recirculating around a drive-through.
Yeah.
So I'm not debating anything. I haven't, I don't understand it.
I don't yet either.
There's issues beyond just the traffic.
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely. There's, 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 you know, water and sewage and a lot of other.
No, I mean, with, with my drive.
Yes.
The way that that it was built, I would tell you, it would not be there, that property. I mean, that's why I'm asking the group to do it. If they're going to go over to go and look because it's beyond, nobody's ever gone off the road there in the 26 years I've been up here. This is, you've got people from all over the place going through these roadways now. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Thanks.
Yep. Okay, so there's no one else. Then I will go ahead and submit a statement to the.
Patrick's got a question.
You come on up, please.
Sure. Patrick White, Popcorn Street. I am not aware of any conversations with the select board that would limit your input to put into public comment or put a deadline on it. Water and Sewer, I know, we had a meeting, they had a meeting earlier today and we talked about them putting comments in. Agriculture and Forestry has talked about putting comments in. I'm sure Conservation is going to put comments in. You have every right to put in comments on your schedule. And I will encourage you and tell you, I will certainly read those comments. Let me finish, please. I will certainly read those comments if you decide to do a site visit at your schedule and submit them after a public meeting of this body where you determine what your comments will be.
I think I get, excuse me, I think I get the idea and I'd like to just.
I have one more point and then you can interrupt, all right?
Please, please be concise. Thank you.
Really? I just talked for 30 seconds, Kate. It's likely that the select board, once again, has to be determined, will hire a peer review engineering firm to take a look at this proposal. And I would strongly suggest that, that as we get that peer review engineering report, that if you have comments on it, you should, you should submit them. The town has never done a project this big. And, and I, frankly, as a, at a personal level, I encourage all the help we can get in evaluating this proposal. And so I just feel like regardless of what, I don't like to contradict Michael, but regardless of what he said, your comments as a public body are welcome at the schedule that you put in.
Thank you. Yep. No, no sooner I hear from Josh than I had thinking I'm going to double-check on the comment period and we will look into that. Okay? All right, so is everybody finished with that one? Can we move ahead?
Sure.
Okay, you sure?
Has anybody looked at the preliminary engineering report that was done on this thing?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Go ahead.
If I were reading that, I would say that the building should be torn down.
Well.
I realize it's preliminary.
Well, the whole, if you will, argument about the project, part of it has been that it's, it's a historical building.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, to tear it down, there's a whole set of parameters that would allow him to do that.
Well, it just, it just seems from the way the report was written that they, it would make more sense to take it down and build the same thing again, using all the similar materials and all that, that they could, okay? Than trying to preserve, to preserve what's there.
Well, we weren't allowed, and I go back to this regularly because it was so frustrating to me. There was a caretaker's cottage at Highland Farm that we were not allowed to take down. It was a falling down shack, it still is. Weren't allowed to tear it down. Not worth the money to fix it up. They're in no man's land, so.
It is the oldest building on the property.
Whatever. Went and looked at it and agreed that it was basically throw a match at it. So this is a much more significant building, the history of it and the scale of it. But I just go to that because I know there was, there's a significant process to have that happen. Being that it is.
And actually, I spoke, I think, and now realize we're, we're talking about another.
Oh, okay.
There were divergent views on that, that property. But why don't we do this? We'll go ahead and recommend a site visit. And I will check into the comment period with Donna. And I'll get back to you all on that. And, yeah. Anything else?
So our proposal that we wait until we get to see the plan and get the information from the select board before we have a site visit, is that off the table?
No, we're recommending to the select board at this point is that there be a site visit that's open to the, both boards and to the public. So.
In regard, kind of much after.
As a first step, yeah. Yeah. Are we good? Okay, great. All right, so next up, we have, so the other possible development project in town is the Affordable Housing Trust Committee and Glendale Middle Road. We've got a lot of folks here tonight. Road, I see. So I think, you know, one thing that's important to know is that with the Glendale Middle Road project, depending on where the funding, how that's approached and where the funding comes from for that, if it falls under what's known as Chapter 40B, then the planning board does not have any say. It goes to the Zoning Board of Appeals. So still, even though we would not be the board, it wouldn't fall under the boards, the planning board's jurisdiction, we could certainly make comments. So first of all, Liz, is there anything, I know you guys haven't met, right?
There's nothing to.
There's nothing.
There's, I saw this, it was like, I don't really understand why I'm on here. And it specifically said Glendale Middle Road because I think everybody here is here for that. And I did not tell you that there was anything to report. We haven't had a meeting.
Well, I, I think, as I mentioned previously, I've just put it down as a, as a standing item.
Oh, I know, but you never put in Glendale Middle Road on it before. And today it has, and you've got all these people who came out and there's nothing to report. If you had, I wish you had asked me before, just so we could have been more specific on it because I could have said we haven't had a meeting.
So is there, you know, what, is there any, any status at all? There's nothing, no.
We haven't had a meeting. I can't report anything, there's no meeting.
All right, so I guess my question for the board is, even though, you know, depending on if this falls under Chapter 40B, it would go to the zoning, zoning board of appeals. You know, after all, this is as impactful, you know, to Glendale Middle Road folks as anything is to the DeSisto neighborhood. Would the board want to comment? And, you know, that's my question.
Well, there's nothing, again, it's similar in that there's nothing on the table yet as far as a plan or a scope or really anything to this point. So I think it's difficult to decide or talk about something that's.
Not happening.
Not there yet or not proposed yet.
Yep, that's, that's true. When we know more and if, if it's going in the direction of, and I realize there's not consensus on the Affordable Housing Trust Committee as to what direction this should go. And what I'm hearing is that some people want like five to seven properties, some people want 60 bedrooms. So I.
I don't think it's been stated by anybody. I mean, you may have been talking to people outside of the, you know, outside of the meeting, but we've never really said, because we don't have a plan, because we don't know what the costs are. It's so hard for us to say somebody feels a certain way until we see and know what it, what it's about. That's just, it's kind of projection.
Okay, that's, you know, you know, I am talking to people and I am hearing different.
Not hearing, but it's not in a meeting, it's not where we're talking about it as a group and saying, this is what we want. So to report that just doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. All right, so, you know, why don't we, I'm, I'd like to leave this. I, I did mention to you that I wanted a, you know, regular updates as they're available.
I know, but please don't write Glendale Middle Road on it because that was not, it's just not representative.
On your agenda if you have nothing.
That's my question.
Can you come on up, please?
Sure. Don Snider, Glendale Middle Road. All these people are here tonight because it says Glendale Middle Road, you know, and update. You have no updating, why do you put it on your agenda? Liz, I just don't understand.
I did not put it on the agenda.
I put it on the agenda. And I'd like to know from the planning board, and I've heard that until there's something concrete, they don't, they don't want to discuss it. And that's fine, I accept that.
I'm still confused as to why it's on the agenda.
Yeah, because on the agenda, it reads as update.
Tonight and waiting to hear something and we have nothing. So we all can go home? You know?
Well, I think it's important for people to know, Don, that there's a fair amount of concern, you know, as to how this potential project, depending on the scope, which we don't know, will impact that area. And, you know, I think it's important for, for folks to realize that if this goes in the direction of Chapter 40, Chapter 40B, this is completely outside the purview of the planning board. In fact, it's pretty much outside the purview of the town hall. So it would go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And, you know, as far as jurisdiction, the planning board would have no say. So I think that's, you know, I think that's important.
I'm still confused as to why it's on the agenda.
It's just, it read as update.
Yeah. Come on up, yes.
Happy New Year again. I just wanted to thank the planning board actually for putting it on the agenda. I know that, you know, the project or, actually, there is no project yet. But the site has been identified in the Housing Production Plan. It's been affiliated with the 40B process. And to Kate's point, it will bypass the planning committee. But just as a former planner for New York City, I am so encouraged that there is a spotlight on this particular parcel because I do think it brings up a lot more issues than just the Housing Affordable Committee's purview. Some of those issues are related to broader concerns, transportation concerns, infrastructure concerns, wetland concerns, conservation concerns. So from my viewpoint, I understand that it might be a little unfair to Liz, you know, to put it on here. I believe the, the Housing, the Affordable Housing meeting is Monday?
Yes.
And I'm hopeful because I think there's a sewer study, a sewer study.
It should be ready by then.
Oh, will it be ready by then?
I don't know for sure, but that's what we projected, so.
Well, that's, you know, that's information that's good to have.
Well, I said that last time I was here when I gave the whole report.
Good reminder.
And the other question I had, and I don't know if anybody can answer it, but there is a process for the Housing Production Plan. And the reason I'm just talking about the plan is because it's related to this proposal or this site in general. I don't know if that plan has actually gone to the state. I believe the state has a role with respect to reviewing it. I think it would be very interesting for all of us here to, you know, to understand that process. And I suggested that the Affordable Housing Trust have some sort of meeting about it or, you know, help inform us all. But has, I don't know if you know this, and I hate to put you on the spot, but maybe Patrick.
Patrick would know better.
But do you know if that plan has gone to the state? And if there has been any comments from the state with respect to the plan?
I, I think that this takes some time to review. I think my guess is it'll be rubber stamp and it'll be approved, but I don't know.
And there could be modifications as well.
I doubt it.
You doubt it?
I mean, you know, this, it's just.
I don't know, but I think it's helpful, you know, information. And even though the planning committee may not have a formal role, like I said, I'm so encouraged about your comments so far about the importance of this particular site. And I look forward to actually hearing more. And I look forward to actually hearing more comments, you know, in the or just put it to bed. I'll answer questions if you have any, but thanks so much.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay. All right. So anyone else from the from the board want to comment? No? Okay. All right. So moving right along, then we've got follow up discussion on the master plan update. So the last time we talked about sort of the, you know, we got board input and we heard from Patrick White from the select board on the master plan and I guess, you know, some funding at the Affordable Housing Trust Committee, federal funds require for grants require an updated master plan. So we talked about that a little bit. And Wayne, I think you wanted to continue the discussion, so it's it's back on the agenda.
Well, just that we move forward, I want to there's specific reasons why we have to review this. And I, you know, as a review, I assume you can review it and say, okay, still good. And that considers a review. But I, if there's changes that are are proposed or ideas that need to be discussed about it, I just don't want to reinvent the wheel and open up the discussion to everything. If there's specific pieces that we need to look at possibly, that's fine. But I we have a tendency to go broad brush with some of our thoughts and and I'd rather if there's really specific things to look at, fine. But I want to focus on those and I think most of it, if you look at it, I don't, it's amazing how I think it was 96 it was done. Take a look at it. It's it's pretty interesting actually to look at it and see how so much has not changed. Things have. But it's a if you haven't looked at it, I would encourage you to look at it. That's all. And we were headed into a discussion there last time and it was, I just thought it was worth pursuing. If if there were things like that, that we needed to maybe review and go over it. But I don't have one for you, put it that way.
No, I agree that if we can update it, but, you know, do it right and not just, you know, do it because, okay, this is tied to grants. I think it should be done done well. But I agree with you that the original, in fact, Joel Russell, who did the diagnostic in his report, he commented that, you know, he felt that the original master plan held. And so, you know, I think if it can be done, you know, I think.
Well, the fact that there hasn't been trouble with it.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, one thing that, you know, I'd be interested to know a little bit more about is we have a new administration in Washington. So, you know, are these federal funds going to, are they going to hold? You know, that's one question in my mind. And, you know, what's the cost? What would be the cost of updating the master plan and, you know, relative to these grants? So, you know, I sort of, these are it's something that I'd be interested to know a little bit more about. So, yeah.
And I didn't have any great conversation to pursue, but I I thought it was a good meeting last time. And we actually had a good conversation and it didn't feel like we were quite done. Maybe we were.
I think it opened a door. I mean, I think it gave us something to think about and we all have to really look at it. And, I mean, I spent time with the diagnostic report and the vision, the vision report. And they're really good. I think now comparing them to the master plan and seeing where it stands is not a bad idea because we have these things in front of us. And if it says, yeah, but there's still some things that we need to do. I think the visioning, when you look at what do we want, I thought it was really clever. I mean, I went to both of those meetings, the open meetings and talked about what what do you want to see here in 2036? And I think in order for that to happen and keep the character of the town, that we really should be very careful with the master plan in order to be able to do the things. Oh, my God, they're putting them asleep. The first time I've ever.
The town is, you know, it's also true that the town has changed a lot since the visioning.
COVID.
Yeah. So it's there been, there has been a lot of change. So and, you know, and I had talked about this. I mean, this was a long time ago with with Jack and you know, one thing he brought up was, you know, you really have to this was back, you know, in the early days of my going on the planning board and, you know, I was all interested in updating the master plan back then until I started looking into it. And I was like, oh, my goodness, you gotta be kidding. But, you know, he said, you really have to capture the the part time, part time community. They didn't do that with the first in the 90s when they did the original master plan. Yeah. So, you know, so, so, yeah, so I have talked to some people and they felt like, you know, update it and would like to see it with the planning board. You know, this is definitely a reasonable thing for planning boards to do. So, you know, I think we can, I'll look into it some more and we got a lot coming up in the next few months. So I think we need to get through this, you know, get through this semester.
Can we get help from Berkshire Regional Planning?
Should be.
Depends, you know, depends. I think we should explore, explore, look at all the options.
Yeah. And they just helped Lanesboro? I think they just helped Lanesboro last year.
I actually thought that the group that did the MVP, Patrick, you came up with that group. I thought they were very good. So, you know. Yeah. Okay.
Since you asked me to come back, can I just come in?
Yeah, come on up.
Patrick White again. First of all, I would just suggest that that vision statement and the the diagnostic report have no force of law. They don't count as a master plan for the town. 1996 master plan does not count as a master plan for the town. It's not just grants around any one area of town. It's grants around a whole lot of areas of town. And I would, I would, I would suggest that if you look at MNA's website, for example, where they talk about planning boards and master plans, the two top responsibilities of planning boards in the state of Massachusetts are, one, the subdivision control regulations, which you guys do an awesome job on. And the second is keeping the master plan up to date. I would also point out that we have a lot of issues that are transformative in nature, both in terms of either ignoring or advancing. I think that a bunch of people are today, for example, showed up because of concern. Let's face it. To be honest, concerns around Glendale Middle Road. That is the role of the affordable housing in the town. We have the Cecil Communities designation, where the biggest town in the Berkshires, one of only 17 towns in the Commonwealth out of 350, have just been designated a Cecil Community. There's upsides to that and maybe some downsides to that. You all know my opinion because I write about them all the time, but maybe the whole point of a master plan process is to allow the entire community to come together and debate these massive transformative issues before us and give people like this board and my board feedback on where we, we, on, on, on what we should do. You know, it's not the master plan is a legal document that is supposed to inform how folks like me make decisions. And I wouldn't be afraid of a process, even if there's a lot of work. They just went through a master plan with BRPC. They said they had a wonderful outcome. I read it. It's a great master plan. The consultants, just similar to the MVP plan we came up with, consultants do most of the work, coordinate most of the meetings, but it really becomes a function of the planning board to then, you know, guide them around what direction should be, should go in and.
Wayne, please.
Why is the, why do you consider 96 plan not valid?
Because they expire, consider expire.
The state, I think they're, Wayne, they think they're good for five years.
Five?
Yeah, which is crazy, you know, given the, I'm sorry. Is it 10?
Remember, the only question I.
So I'd just like to, excuse me, I'd just like to comment that I don't think this board is afraid of doing, updating a master plan. I think we're we're gathering information and we're, you know, we want to understand more and talk about it. I have not picked up anywhere from any of the members of this.
Bad choice of word, I apologize. The only question I posed at the last meeting was one of respect before looking into things like One Stop for Growth, which fully fund through grants, development of a master plan. I wanted to get feedback from this board as to whether we we might want to look into the application process, which in of itself might take three, six, 12 months. Who knows how long it takes to get that grant, to get the funding in place like Lanesboro and Lee just did, to hire a consultant. I think that that's the question before the board is, do you want to authorize Michael to apply for the grant to look for a master plan? And then you can decide if you actually want to do it and who you want to hire to do it. But, yeah, the getting the money in place so that it's not $100,000 or whatever it costs of the town's money is kind of maybe a good first step. But, you know, it's not my role. This is a planning board function. And 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 if this is something that you're interested in, you know, apply for the money, then decide.
Yeah, we we heard you loud and clear and and, you know, we'll be looking into it and we will, you know, do our due diligence, gather the information and and I'll talk to the board. We'll have it on the agenda.
And I'd like to see it be identified. Do we have a problem? Do we have an issue with it before we dig into it? Are there specific problems that we want to dig into and focus on? Or are we pretty happy with what's there now? Again, I I encourage you to read it because so much of this stuff is
Yeah.
stayed the same. And yes, there is some some other things that come along that are not the same as they were in 96, but.
It's not just about.
And particularly, the survey was was, you know, was was well done. It was better done than some of the surveys I've seen more recently.
I just think the point is that it's it's basically expired, expired. If we need this for grants for bridges or whatever it is in town, we need to have an updated one. And whether it means we just do the little parts of it, fine, or or stamp it or whatever it is.
Stamp it so that we qualify and then work on it.
But it would definitely be nice if we could get a grant to help us do this. And it's not at the cost of the taxpayers and we can get a good job done.
Nearly every grant that the town can apply for includes a component of whether or not, these are all scored on a points basis, you know. So you get five points for having this, 10 points for having that. You play a Parks and Rec, for example, most of the Parks and Recs grants that we could get from the state to augment our parks and rec and and recs activities require a master plan. We're getting dinged on that. And it is going to get more competitive for these grants because, as they pointed out, there is going to be less federal money available for this kind of funding and, you know, it would just help. So there's my pitch.
Danny, come on up. Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Danny Alsop, Tree Main Street. I just wanted to add to Patrick's comments and I'm just jumping into the conversation now, so I don't know about previous conversations. But climate change is coming, is here. And the hazard mitigation plans, for example, for Stockbridge are are now climate updated, as are all the plants in the county, except for Lee, which is not finished. And the the recommendations are profound. And they have impact on almost every dimension of the administration and and running of the town in one way or another. And for budgets and so if 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 the if the board is, does have a role in in advocating for the, an update, that would certainly be a reason, I think.
Well, you know, these are things, thank you.
Okay, that's really all I have to say.
Well, can I just respond?
Sure.
So these are, you know, these are topics that, as part of a master plan process, these are things that are just can be discussed. These are things that come up. You know, I know that that was certainly as part of the MVP Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant, that was, you know, huge part of it. I mean, that was sort of the key of it.
Yep.
So, but yeah, as part of master planning, this, you know, this is would be certainly a topic.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else? Okay, so, you know, we'll, we'll, as I said, we have a lot coming up in the next several months. But we will we will add this to the the long list. Okay.
So is that a no? You don't want to apply for the grants at this point?
It wasn't a no, it wasn't a yes. It's, we're going to, you know, we're going to start working on this and you know, start gathering information.
Is there any reason we shouldn't apply for a grant? It's going to take a while to get a grant and refuse the money.
That would be the only thing I would ask is if we apply for it and get it. And it does end up being a sort of a rubber stamp. Are we required to spend the money or what happens with that?
I'd like to gather and I'd like to find out more about the grant. And I'm happy to talk to to Michael about that. So I would like to, you know, why don't, as a next step, I'll look, start, I'll look into that and and bring that information back to the board. Does that work for you all?
And if we look over it and we think that it's something that maybe, maybe we say it doesn't need much or whatever, but to qualify and we've been delinquent in our duty to keep this thing up. I didn't realize it was a 10 year, five year thing that we were required to do. Shame on me. But if it's something that needs to be in place for us to even qualify, I don't, how much of a process is it to for instance, get it done? Okay, we're going to go with what we have now and then we'll work on something new. Does it have to wait five years before it gets reviewed again? In other words, if we're losing out on things to, because we don't have one in place, it's not valid anymore. Should we get one done and then focus on things that may need to be done in it?
It's a priority.
I mean.
And then I I know you say there's, we get dinged. I'd be interested in knowing really what that means.
Yeah.
I will.
I mean, I I think Michael probably would have told me if he felt that, you know, we were taking major hits. So, you know, but why don't, you know, I'll gather the information and and I'll, I'll get back to you all.
Do you want to put it on the agenda for next meeting?
Sure, you can do that.
Well, I'm all in favor of moving ahead with a process. I mean, I I agree with you. It does not necessarily be some sort of maximalist thing, you know. It could be, but 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 that really we.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I think what I'll do is you know.
See what would suffice as an updated plan. And what's, what's the least that we have to do at least to get back up in line? And then we go from there.
I mean, I think if we're going to do it, you know, we should. I'm not comfortable with the idea of just doing some slapdash job just to qualify for grants that may not be there. So you know, let's, let's gather the information and, you know, I will talk to Michael and ask him, you know, how much of a hit does he feel we're really taking? And, you know, well, I've got your, you know, I I hear you, Wayne, specific pieces that can be looked at. Don't want to reinvent the wheel and climate change component, you know. So let me just gather the information and I'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Maybe Michael could come speak to us at the next meeting.
I was thinking I might ask that. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Anything else? No? Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
All are in favor.